Questions meeting, it's May thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Please call the roll. Sorry, Amy.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Habermill?
Here.
And Mr. Jordan?
Here. We have some guests here today that have been found doing something great within their classrooms or within their school buildings. And we're gonna invite them up to the front right now. If you guys come on along here near the wall. Come on up, guys. All right. Stand over here.
Evan Haber.
Stand right to the microphone.
Evan Haber, third.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Parker.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
An app designer.
All right. Good job. Okay, you're all set.
Well, I like Minecraft.
All right.
Kai Stowcheck.
You wanna be what? What's your name?
Kai Stowcheck.
What's your, what grade you in?
Second.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Stainbrook.
Yeah, what do you want to be when you grow up?
FBI.
FBI. Now for him, huh?
I am Jeremy Cooper, and I wanna be a fireman. I am in second grade, Ms. Hollers class.
Good job.
Melina Edgell. I'm in third grade, and my teacher's Mrs. Coll, and I wanna be a teacher.
My teacher Spencer.
What, say it again?
My teacher Spencer.
Okay. Uh, what grade you in?
First grade.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Schultz.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
Vet.
What? A vet?
Vet.
All right.
My name is Julie. I'm in, I'm in kindergarten. I am five. I wanna be a teacher.
Who's your teacher, Julie? Miss Trippmather. What are you doing up there for yourself, talking to the mic?
My name. My name is Matthew Hershford. I'm in Mrs. Coll's homeroom class. I'm growing up, I wanna be a firefighter.
All right, good job. Firefighter. Come on over here.
Hi, my name is Clayton. I'm in kindergarten. My teacher is Mrs. Greg, and I wanna be a police.
All right. That's all said. We're missing somebody? Well, just go ahead and get it started with the pledge of allegiance. They're gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if you don't come on as standing, and we're gonna have a moment of silence. Come on. Let's go right here. We're gonna get it started.
(Inaudible) to the highest, to the highest, to America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Every living has a metric's glory, respect ourselves, and other people responsibility for ourselves, we come from our native earth.
Good job. 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 Well, it's always the best part of the meeting, each and every week, so, month, excuse me. I wanna thank the children for their efforts in class. Your teachers appreciate your hard work in school and the jobs you do each day. So, thank you very much, and thank you for coming here tonight. Next on the agenda, we have the student liaison update from Mrs. Ennis.
Okay, this evening we have Mrs. Jacqueline Hane from, she's a first grade teacher at Vermillion Elementary School, and she's got a student here. She's gonna show us how they learn in class.
Does he have a dongle back there?
Pardon me?
A dongle. Just on one. Oh. All right, well, we'll begin before.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn.
Good job. Good job.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn. I'm seven years old, and I am in Mrs. Hane's first grade class.
This year, Brooklyn worked on, she created a video using an iPod in our classroom, and then she learned how to edit the video using iMovie, and we entered it into a technology conference at Kent State University. And actually, our first grade class didn't win, but the second grade class of Mrs. Stainbrooks did win. So, we do have that video to show you tonight. However, in our classroom, we use a lot of technology every single day, and so Brooklyn's gonna tell you a couple of things that we do in our room every day.
Some days in our class, like, one day, we had to go on Brain Honey and complete this bare web quest on Brain Honey. And, um, we like to go on iPods and play games, and, um, we record our time on what we do each day, and, um, other days, we, um, do RAS kids in foundations. Um, and RAS kids involve reading, and we have to take quizzes on each book that we have to complete levels on, and it goes all the way to level Z in the alphabet.
Good job, Brooklyn. We also have pen pals in Africa that we Skype with, and they really enjoy doing that. I create videos, teacher created videos, and I upload them in our, in Brain Honey. And then the students, they learn from it. They use different, different things, like magnet boards, dry erase boards, and, um, and they enjoy that. So, I'm gonna go ahead and show you her video that she created all by herself and edited with the help of our computer teacher, Mr. Hayes. Hopefully that's safe.
(Inaudible)
Brain Honey today, we're the I R, we're the head of the word, and that's the, the lab issue. Don't look like. And then, so, we must start on iPad. Also, like, when you're going through, then you're going out the web, and so, that was our own, our carpet will be going to you. Okay? Here, true. Bye.
So, you can see that in our classroom, we find ways to blend learning with technology in addition to other things. The students really are self-driven. We, I've shown them what to do, and pretty much, they run themselves. So, and Brooklyn is a big helper in my classroom. And that's what we do in first grade. Thank you for having us.
So, any questions?
Is that the person that's coming from Africa?
Just a comment, Brooklyn, that was fabulous, for first grade, to, to put all that together, that was excellent. Good job. Good job.
Very nice job. And Mrs. Hane, I know you've been working with this class in South Africa, actually, it's Central Africa, right? It's in Ghana, towards Ghana.
Yeah.
We're working on getting a principal from the school to come out. He's supposed to be out at the end of the month, and they've been Skyping back and forth with her students in the classroom. I just got notification today that there's a problem with his visa, but I think if we hurry, we might still be able to get it. So, I'll, I'll contact you tomorrow, but I know that's one of the projects that she's been working on in the class, and great job with that video project as well, so, nice job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, good job, Brooklyn. Okay, next on the agenda, item number five, we have a legislative update from Mr. Habermill.
Okay, a couple items. The Senate Education Finance Committee has been hearing testimony on House Bill fifty-nine, which is the biennial budget bill. Basically, just hearing testimony at this time from, from different organizations. There are sessions set up this week, actually, for public testimony, and more to come on that, as they're, the revised bill is being studied and, and critiqued, if you will. In addition to that, House Bill thirty-two is in the House Education Committee, and that is legislation seeking to base the school calendar on a minimum number of hours in a year versus number of days. And they're meeting on that and receiving testimony on that as well. So, that's the update for now.
Do those hours include, you know, I guess, time in which the teachers are in the classroom that are not working with children, or?
No, the way I understood it was, it was, it was student hours, the, the educated hours. At least, that's the way I read it.
Any movement on our House bill, on the security?
It's in the House, and it was a Senate bill, so, Randy Gardner had called me, and he said, it's, it's kind of dying in the House. Not dying in the House, but it just, it stalled a little bit, so, uh, he's, he's trying to get it taken up with some additional legislation. He's very comfortable that, you know, that just, there's a lot of activity, and getting it before the House to have hearings on it is not as easy as you might think. So, it's mostly a matter of it's whose agenda it is and where you get it in line, right?
Exactly.
So, I don't know that it's, I mean, it's just something that you gotta be patient with, I think.
Yeah, it's just a matter of time, so. I, I actually expect to hear back from him, and had not, so, I, I know he's working on it, because it's obviously a bill that he and Mrs. Manning are trying to get put through, Senator Manning, so, so, it's, it's exciting, but it's in the House, so, we thought it would be done by now, honestly. It's just not, so. Anything else? Any questions?
That's it.
Questions? Thank you, Chris, for the, uh, discussion items?
We had mostly everything on the superintendent's report.
Okay, great.
Trying to keep question items to a minimum, unless someone has something.
Yeah, nothing. Anything? Uh, next on the agenda is we have a, a session for public participation. If there's anybody here from the public that would like to address the ward, please do so. Okay? It's been a while since we haven't had Mr. Smith come up and.
Maybe later.
Maybe later, okay. Make somebody in that group in the back up here. We oughta have someone, we have a bunch of students here tonight, so we oughta have them, uh, come up, but. All right, well, public participation's closed. Next, we move on to the item number eight, the treasurer's report.
Attached in your packet this evening are the April thirtieth financial reports for review. Go to the second page and focus on the forecast comparison through April. Year-to-date, we are below our estimated revenue by nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. That is, in many ways, timing on some of the reimbursements that we have coming in for those from our state aid, and also the timing of when all of the reimbursements for homestead and rollback taxes, types of things are received. On the expense side, we had projected spending, at this point in the year, seventeen million one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and, on operating expenses, and we have spent fifteen million eight hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So, we're below budget by about one point, almost one point three million dollars at this point.
How main driver there, Amy?
Yeah.
I think that it's a lot of timing on, notice that one of the areas that we are below our estimate the largest is in the area of personal services, because the timing of when we are paying out some of, some of our supplementals, and the timing of the three payroll months, I've, I've got the estimates in there, basically, on just a twelve-month basis.
Gotcha.
That's what that is.
And the difference in the estimated, or the total income, that nine hundred thousand, we expect to, I mean, that's all gonna recover itself, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Get us excited, I thought we were one point three of that.
Ooh, no.
Okay. There's also down below, there's one point nine million.
In encumbrances, right.
That are encumbered.
Right.
And I would've guessed that was your explanation for that, and under expenses, but.
It's, it's in part, the proportion for the, the salaries, there is some part of that that, that we do carry in encumbrances, that's correct as well. And then we have our financial summary report, which shows our estimated receipts and expenses year-to-date for all of our funds. You'll note those as listed, and we do have, at the bottom of the sheet in our grant fund, several of those have negative cash balances, and in fact, I was doing the cash request for those just before I came in here this evening, so we should have more money coming from those.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Now, move on to item B of, item eight, the superintendent's report.
We missed number two there, a resolution for the donations.
Oh, I apologize, I missed that. Make a recommend, red, make a recommendation, a resolution to accept the following donations. Three hundred dollars to John and Lori Peck for Harry and John Peck Scholarship Fund. Five hundred dollars from Medical Mutual of Ohio for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen Scholarship Fund. Two hundred fifty dollars from Hobart and Karen Johnson for the Hobart Johnson Scholarship Fund. One thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars from Sandusky Erie County Foundation towards the O L W E U S program. Who is that?
That's the Intensive Learning Program.
Take them away. All right, I'll move.
A second.
Please call roll.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
And Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Now, we can move on to item B, the treasurer, excuse me, the superintendent's report.
We've met several times with Mr. Reenie from Green Space, with Lesko. Lesko will be coming out again tomorrow. We'll be working on some library design. We have a space for that within the community section of the facility. Tim will be coming, I believe, at the beginning of next week to us with some pricing for integrity. Get that back and begin talking about how far those funds are going to be able to go. That should be, Tim, I, I know you're gonna come up here and give us some details, but I guess I would have a quick question about that. Will that be the final, or that, that's not really, the bids still technically are not out, but that's a preliminary price list?
That's a, that's a price from our company, from our associates, just, just an estimate of the project.
And if you wanted to just come on up, then I know that you were gonna give us an overview of the project, but we have been working almost on a daily basis with Green Space, and things are starting to ramp up quite a bit here now, as we're starting to get pricing and timelines and things like that. We did update the blog, so if you would all take a look at the, at the blog, we put quite a bit of information up on that. That's available to the board and everyone else, so, things are starting to ramp up and move pretty fast with the project.
Before we get into the schedule, I just handed out, I'll just tell you a few things. The, we received back the traffic study, part of the request from the city of Vermillion, before we go on to look at the infrastructure, and that was very favorable. There's no widening of roads or anything. I didn't get into it real good, but there's some recommendations about traffic flow, which you would expect, so those, the architect will review those, and they'll be implemented as, you know, into part of the, probably when to close gates and when people should be there, because they looked at the whole site, the high school, the, the junior eye. Boy, Dave, I forget the consultants now. Consultant was hired. Do you remember their name, Amy, by chance? Yeah. Yeah, they hired a consultant, that's what they do, and they, maybe you saw them, they were counting cars and bodies and so on for a week or so, and then results are in. No, not in this plan, it never did, no. From. I, I think there might be a turning lane. I don't know if that was, I don't know if that was necessary with this plan, though, with, I'll get back to you guys on that, and we'll, well, we'll have the final site plan should be coming out in the next week or so, as a result of this, um. They, if you look at their report, they know exactly how many students are coming, and how many are on the bus, and how many drove, so, I mean, they could take some, you know, you could ask how, well, how many, you know, twenty percent more drove instead of taking the bus, or what, I mean. Yeah, well, um, they have in there, and I don't remember it exactly, they tell you how many more seconds you'll sit at each traffic stop sign or each light, how many more seconds you'll sit at each intersection with the new student population coming in, so, and what times, you know, are best for each school to, to start, they took that into consideration. So, that's what I mean, they, they had a lot of recommendations, and, I mean, that's what they do, so I think if we follow them, that they'll be, you know, it'll make things flow smoother. But there, you're right, there is gonna be more traffic now than there's ever been.
There'll be sky.
Yeah, right, that, there will be. That's what they recommend. Um, the, excuse me, the soils report also came back, and that came back less than favorable for that site. The, the good news was that there is shale four to seven feet below the finished grade, so that's where the building was set on the shale. However, most of the material above the shale was, was man, you know, was man-made, you know, was compacted back in there by man, you know, what it's, um, an old riverbed, believe it or not. Um, the, their recommendation is that, that most of the soil that's not suitable be removed from the site. We're looking at either amending or drying it out on site. Drying it out on site would be pretty difficult, because we need an area two times the size of the footprint of the project now, so, we really don't have that kind of space over there, so, we'll, we'll get back to you, but, um, we have to see what's gonna happen with that. Oh, you mean the, the farmer's field?
Yeah.
No. West of the sailor waves, not a site that can be used, because it's a flood plain. We looked into that, yeah. Yeah, and, yeah, it's very interesting, if you get a hold of that, to, to read how high the lake used to be. The lake used to be up that high, believe it or not, when you look in this report. But, if you wanna dry it on site, it would, you would lose the two football fields that are behind, between the high school and the, and the, um, the new building. I mean, that's, until it dried, it's, it's really an unknown, you know, I mean, it's, if it was a rainy season, it would be all for naught past, I mean, it's just hard, it's, it's four to seven feet, it just, until you hit good soil. So, we just, I wouldn't get too concerned about it yet, till we figure out exactly what has to be done and what, but I just wanted to let you know, it wasn't, okay, bring in the backhoe and start digging, it's not that simple. Right. That's what we're, that's what we're looking at, I, I can't, I, re, um, probably one to two hundred thousand, I bet, to replace all the soil, if you have, if you had to pull the whole site out and bring in new material, but hopefully we don't have to go that far.
Well, you do have contingency, but you hate to spend it all in the ground, you know, I mean, it's.
We're looking at either amending or drying it out on site. Drying it out on site would be pretty difficult because we need an area two times the size of the footprint of the project now, so we really don't have that kind of space over there, so we'll get back to you, but we have to see what's going to happen with that. Oh, you mean the farmer's field? West of the Sailor Way is not a site that can be used because it's a flood plain. We looked into that, yeah. Yeah. And, yeah, it's very interesting if you get a hold of that to read how high the lake used to be. The lake used to be up that high, believe it or not, when you look in this report. If you want to dry it on site, you would lose the two football fields that are behind, between the high school and the, and the, the new building. I mean, that's, until it dries, it's really an unknown, you know, I mean, it's, if it was a rainy season, it would be all for naught past, I mean, it's just hard, it's, it's four to seven feet, just until you hit good soil. So we just, I wouldn't get too concerned about it yet till we figure out exactly what has to be done and what, but I just wanted to let you know it wasn't, okay, bring in the backhoe and start digging, it's not that simple. That's what we're, that's what we're looking at. I can't, I, re, probably one to two hundred thousand I bet to replace all this soil. If you have, if you had to pull the whole site out and bring in new material, but hopefully we don't have to go that far. Well, you do have contingency, but you hate to spend it all underground, you know, I mean, it's unfortunate thing. So, like Phil said, we'll have the budget back to the treasurer's office this, this coming week, by Thursday night, we're meeting Monday or Tuesday, I forget, next week. And we'll go... Right. Right, it is, but when you estimate, when you give this to the estimators, they're not trying to be the cheapest bidder and try to win the job, but they're trying to give you a, right. Right. And then they, then they know too, from doing this all the time, bids are where bids are coming, they compare it to other jobs. They've looked at other jobs that Lesko did and compared to their work, so they, they're using something comparable for their estimate. Well, it's not environmental, it's structural. I, I would assume, yeah, I would assume, I, yeah, I don't know if that's on Ksans or what. Well, you never know though until, until you do soil borings. I mean, you could move, you know, I mean, you, you could move to the football field and it could be perfect, you know, you just never, you never know and that's, and again, if you look at it, this is very rushed, the way that this, this is a very fast-track job in order to recover the savings and move the school district quickly. They usually spend a year on drawings and all these reports and everything that, that's really happening in less than six months here. So it's, but it's, I mean, it's, it has to happen and it's all happening as timely as possible. And this may answer the, the schedule that I handed out to you guys. This is my schedule and I was trying to get, and you'll see the last item is, is getting the part of the roof on is where I was trying to get to, but if you look at the, from the top, the drawings were sent to the planning commission on May tenth last week and they did make it there. And now we have to have a special planning commission meeting, either the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth and we've been in, in conversation with them and that'll happen. The goal being the final contract drawings completed by May thirty-first so that we can go out to bid on June third. We'll advertise the project on June fifth and then open them in the treasurer's office on June twenty-seventh. We expect to recommend to the board on July eighth. That's, I think that's one of your regular meetings, we thought at that time, but that'll allow the notice to proceed on July tenth and then mobilization on July fifteenth and then all those activities following that happening. The first, about maybe six or eight up from the bottom, you start building the gym in September, the masonry, that, in my view, again, I'm not the contractor, but that's where I'd start building the building in the center there, those are the highest walls. And that would happen on September twenty-third to November first. And then if you follow through there, that'll allow some additional masonry, et cetera. There's, there's two roofing elevations, a high roof area and a low roof area. The high roof area is about forty to fifty percent of the building. That would go on from March tenth to April eighteenth. It's not going to hap, that, that's why I wanted you guys to ask that question and this is, this is my, I really believe, I haven't done this all the way through, but it really, really looks like this is going to turn over in November so that you can move at Christmas break in December. I mean, I, I've kind of felt that, you know, just looking, but now I've started to put it together and it's really pointing to that, that's... Well, exactly, I mean... Well, you, you, you put together a schedule like every day is a sunny day. And there are, when you, when you format it in Primavera, the, the scheduling program we use, they'll account for so many winter days, holidays. You know, you could put together a holiday schedule, a weather schedule, but this, I've allowed for some of that, I mean, now if there's a blizzard and you lose, you know, the whole month of January, that's not in this schedule. But if we have a typical winter, it, this, this'll work. Once we get to see the temporary power on July fifth, there'll be two temporary power poles going, one on the, if, one will be on the, across the street from the tennis court, will that be on the southwest corner and then there'll be one on the northeast corner that we may be able to post them, I don't know how high you want to get, but... Yeah. Sure. Yep, we'll be able to do it. Yes. Yes, all the way around, yep. It'll go, yes, it'll go, let's see what you guys call it, the, the boys' junior varsity field? You know, where that fence where those dugouts are, it'll go right behind that dugout, all the way to the property line and then west from there, right across the property line along the adjacent to Mike's property to the street. And then it'll just be to the east of the sidewalk so that that sidewalk on Douglas Street remains open for foot traffic. Well, the, the practice, the practice football field, excuse me, not the practice, the, the football field that goes north and south, that'll be gone, you'll lose that field. And it calls for those goalposts to be turned over to the owner, so. It, that, that's behind, the fence will be, well, like five, ten yards behind that goalpost, you'd still play football there. It's out of the project, it's not on the project. Right, right behind the dugout, goes right behind the dugout. Yeah, there's a, a water line, thank you, Phil, I did forget about that. When the project was going to be built at Sailor Way, as part of the project, there were going to be two new fire hydrants put in, in front of Sailor Way. The city and fire chief are still requesting that that be done. The construction manager and architect didn't feel that that was within the scope of the work in the school we are doing and they, and they agreed, but they do want something done because there's only one fire hydrant that feeds Sailor Way right now. If a truck ever came, it closes Sailor Way down because they hooked to it across the street. I mean, they'd be able to work on the fire, but it would just really be a tough, tough way to do it, so they want to look at adding a couple hydrants. They want to, they also want to look at tying Sailor Way into city water. Currently, it's on township water, so they've asked to look at that as well. So, we are, we're looking at that and seeing if, what can be done and what kind of dollars it'll take to do that. Yeah, there's, I think there's, the code now, you put them all the way around, there's a three-hundred-foot circle and the circles have to overlap, there has to be a fire hydrant with every three-hundred feet, so I, I think there's like two in the back and three in the front, maybe one of those is existing on Douglas, so at least four new hydrants that I think of off the... Yeah, yeah. Right. And there might be another one up on sixty maybe, but it's pretty far from the school, it's not... Yeah, right. Yes. Most of the retention is going underground. It is, it's more of a, it's really not a detention pond because the last time I saw it drawn, and I haven't seen it since I went to the planning commission, the drain was right on the bottom, it's, it's more of just a depression in the grass, so water, yes, well, water would run there, but it, and there's stone underneath it too. Hold the, hold the, detain any water. So, it'll just be a grass depression is what I saw. Two to three feet, they, yeah, we... There's two thirty-six inch pipes along Douglas Street also to detain water, so the water is all underground. Yeah. Yeah. And there's a little water in that one right now that shouldn't be too. I don't know if you saw when there was water in there, but just very six inches, but... Okay? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have just two short items here and they're more informational for the board. I put a shoot at each one of your guests just as an announcement for the opportunity for our students in the summertime for a Lego Minestorm's summer day camp. And we are offering that again this year, this is, I think, the third summer that we'll be offering this. There's been quite a good sign up for that every summer. And there's two sessions, one is June seventeen through the twenty-first and the second session is June twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth. And I'll hand this to the photo journal tonight so that she can put that down and make sure that our kids know about that opportunity during the summertime. Our teachers will be teaching that along with the Great Lakes Science Center again. So it's just a great opportunity and I wanted you to see that, so I just put that on as part of my report. The second, or the third item is just a reminder that the board is invited to the breakfast on May twenty-first, but if you're going to come, realize that not really coming for breakfast, you're coming to serve the staff breakfast, so you'll be able to eat afterwards, but we'd like to see you there if you can make it. And this is part of the senior week activities and just one of the things though that we do on an annual basis. So if you could come on the twenty-first at seven, we'd love to have you there as a faculty. And that's all I have on superintendent's reports.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. All right, anything on the consent agenda that you guys do?
Well, actually, I, the, there's a couple contracts there that are related to the dialogue for the last year and a half about human resource stuff. And those contracts have been put on the consent agenda not having been discussed in previous meetings because they came about pretty recent. And, and not that I want to pull them, but I want to just suggest that this falls into superintendent goals and we haven't done it, we haven't done the goal review recently. So, I'm only going to say I recommend that we have that on for June as the goal review process of the superintendent treasurer because this would be discussed then. That's all.
Could you make a note of that then?
Yeah, we'll put that on and, you know, we have talked to Rachel Wixey and associates and at that time we'll tell you more about...
Yeah, it doesn't, all I'm saying is it doesn't need discussion now, it can go on the consent agenda because board is informed, but for full discussion of the details.
Yeah, we'll be glad to do that on the next board agenda.
I'd like to pull off item C. Is there anything else? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the consent agenda with the exception of item C.
A second.
Please call it all.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes, my concern is maybe a little more detail on the, the fees on item C. It was at a percentage of the additional work, are we meeting in the middle there or are we covering a hundred percent of?
Procedurally, it comes back as a resolution, standalone resolution then for second discussion.
Okay. So, item C is approve additional services with Lesko Associates for the change in the scope for K-three standalone means attachment deed for review. I'll move.
A second.
Discussion? Yeah, I guess my concern is, I mean, just looking at the, the bill, it's planning, building, site, design and document, there's not a lot of information here for fifty thousand dollars. I guess exactly what this is, is this a hundred percent of their additional work? Are we meeting in the middle or is this a percentage of the additional work? Just a little more detail on what, what it is.
Did you see the item, there were items sent out, I believe...
On the email?
Last Monday, there was an email and then on Friday there was, and that showed the breakdown of the parts that were, and I believe it was about seventeen thousand that went to various engineering firms for some of the additional things that needed to be done. And that left thirty-three thousand that was additional fees for Lesko. And in the weekend review that went out on Friday, there was a detailed breakdown of how many hours, what, that they had spent on the various items within the project. And Phil and I did speak to Sylvia Gillis who is our construction council and has helped draft those contracts. She did feel that it was, they were within the terms of the contract to bill for those charges and when we explained to her what the scope was, she felt that they also seemed reasonable based on her experiences as well. I think one of the things she felt that was important was that, and she had asked Phil and I in, in our conversation, and I think if we, if we look back several times through the course of those meetings, the folks here from Lesko, Mr. Blackford and Mo mentioned that there would be additional fees for the redesign work and that's where those items came in.
See, I, I don't recall that, that conversation ever happening here, so maybe they've mentioned somewhere else there'd be additional fees, so I, I wish at the time, I mean, I think that's a lot of money, fifty thousand dollars for additional fees and I think...
And what's the thirty-three then? I saw the itemized list with the thirty-three thousand, is that...
So that's actually Lesko's fees, right?
That's Lesko's portion of the fifty.
Of the fifty.
You, you, you know, and obviously when I saw this come across, I sent an email and I talked to the group and I was kind of concerned about it as well and it, just a concern that it seemed a little hot. It just, the fifty thousand dollar just tag on number was, just seemed a rounded figure that was kind of, you know, and that's why, and that's why, you know, I wonder what you... a rounded figure that was kind of, you know, and that's why, that's why, you know, I wonder what you thought about this. I mean, how do you feel about this number?
Well, I think that they provided us the documentation that showed where they had allocated those costs to. I think that they did do a considerable amount of additional work, giving various design proposals. I think through that process, they had given some drawings or planning for an addition to the high school as an option and also the detached building. So there was a lot of work there. I'm certainly not an expert in what the usual hours and things are. So I guess I would have to defer to the experts that we consulted who felt that it was within a normal range for what we were describing.
Are those numbers rounded?
There were some, some were, but there was a detailed, and I'm sorry, I did not bring that with, down with me tonight. Brought that to me, but there was some additional details showing what those were roughly rounded numbers, yes.
I'm not an expert either, just as an offer, anytime that you want to come in and see the complete set of drawings and the detail, more detail if you want, and if you'd like to bring someone with you, that anytime that you want to bring somebody that you might know that might know more about than we do, bring someone in, take a look at the detailed drawings. They had the first set that they gave me. And those are available in our offices here, so please feel free anytime that you want to take a look at more of the scope of the work that they're doing because they provide those documents ongoing in every single phase of this and give us copies of those. So I haven't, we put what we can onto the blog, but there's just so many detailed drawings that- and they're large and they're the full set of prints.
I understand there was a lot of additional work that went into it. That's, I think that's understandable. It is a little odd that it's such a round even number. And I don't know the exact terms for their billing, whether it's by the engineering hours or if there was a rate quoted upfront.
There was, if there was additional work that was in the original contract.
Okay, that would make a little more sense then. If, is there a more detailed breakdown of cost than what we already have?
Not other than the one that was sent Friday in the weekend review. That was as detailed as as we have it. I mean, it doesn't say this person on this day worked this many hours, but it tells the various departments or positions within their design team, how many hours they spent in total in that redesign.
We, look, we put this company through a lot in a very short period of time, no question, but but at the same time, there were some, you know, concerns that we, I think we all had as a board that, you know, we didn't completely feel that, you know, that all these costs should be ours. And so that's part of the reason for my concern here as well. So, and I know, you know, there's certain things that, and they showed us that, you know, they weren't responsible, but, you know. That's really what I was looking for. Is this thirty-three part of the total? It was fifty and they cut it back and gave us a little bit of a discount or?
Yeah, I'm the same mindset. What are your thoughts? I mean, do you feel like they just said, hey, this is it and there's no-
I think there was a lot of blame to go around everywhere to get us to where we got to now across the street. Who knows what the cause was, but I guess I was, they were here to ask.
Yeah.
I guess that it's going to have, that's going to have to be something I think that the board's going to have to evaluate as far as what they feel the value of that is.
They do a nice job. I think they did a nice job for us.
I think our choices are simple. We either trust and approve or we table this and ask for further explanation. You know, that's, those are the choices right this second. And, and when I saw it, I will say, I felt just like everybody else. Being a business owner, when you get, when you get a bill and it's a straight round number, when somebody's billing time, that is extremely improbable, it's extremely illogical and that, sad to say, that in itself raised suspicion. So that's a dilemma, you know? And if, and if you haven't had conversation with them on that very point, then I'm guessing that that's what everybody's saying. We need to have conversation on that point, I think.
I think actually their amount that was their portion came up to thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six, you know? But when I said, give me the information for the roughly thirty-three thousand, that's when they brought back the thirty-three. But I mean, we can have them come in and explain it, I guess, would be the situation. We asked them to break it down and-
Yeah, I think there's enough discomfort amongst the board and I guess, I think in this case, unless I'm reading into this, maybe we, in this case, the school asks for that, we'll table this item for, to our next board meeting. If we have to have a special board meeting, make payment on this for whatever reason, let us know. This is a big amount of money for any company to have to sit on and that's my biggest concern. It's a big invoice and I don't want to put any company in any financial bad situation on a project they're putting what's what tiers on, but it just, it just, unless, is there any other comments or any thoughts on that?
No, I think we should table till we get a breakdown.
Okay, so item C, we're going to table that.
I would like to make a motion that we table this.
One second.
I'm sorry, the second was- Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Habermell?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any other business that like to bring before the board? Dates and locations of future item twelve. Is there any concerns about those dates and times? July eighth, good for everybody. Sounds like it's an important date for Tim. So I don't know if there's anybody out of town for the Fourth of July. Are we okay?
I'm good.
Good. All right, recommend the resolution to move no executive session for the purpose of the appointment. Employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of public employees. I'll move. Second.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Habermell?
Yes.
Motion carries eight twenty-nine P M.